Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May Kansas State Board of Education meeting. As you can see, we are all having our meeting virtually again this month due to our restrictions from the COVID-19. I'd like to acknowledge that all board members are present virtually in attendance and like to take just a moment if I could to, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week and we'd like to just extend our thanks and congratulations to all the teachers in the state of Kansas for continuing to do a job well done in these unusual circumstances we're dealing with. They're coming up with many creative ways to work with the children and I know the children are, or the kids are out there working too, having a variety of ways that they're working, some of them virtually, some of them via packets, so we appreciate all their work. And we certainly appreciate the work of the parents too, because this is a different time for our parents too and we'd like to thank them for all of their efforts in helping their children as we move through the ending, towards the ending of the, of the school year, since we are in May. Like to congratulate the seniors, many of them are getting ready to graduate. Pretty exciting times, have to say that probably nobody else has had this kind of a graduation before. So the seniors of 2020, I'm sure they wish they were in school, we do too. But congratulations to the seniors as they are persevering through this COVID-19 and stay-at-home learning situation that we have this year. So again, thanks and welcome to everybody who's listening. I would like to read the mission statement of the Kansas State Board of Education. The mission is to prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. And the vision is for Kansas to lead the world in the success of each student. At this time, I'd ask for a moment of silence, please. Okay, I believe that we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and I believe Randy is going to put a flag on our screen. So there we go. If we can, have everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, taking a look at the agenda, board members, we are going to ask for any changes to today's agenda. If you have anything, please raise your hand so I can see you. Michelle Dombrowski?
Am I able to talk now?
Yes, you're
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to make, I guess, a statement before we approve the consent agenda item for the day. Three things come to mind: our turbulent economy, budget shortfalls in the future, and probably the number one thing is kids not in school. I'm seeing, I've been copied on, a lot of constituents and parents out there concerned about the future and what it holds as far as schools starting in the fall, activities and sports. And I guess at this time, I'm, that, that's my concern too. And when I look at the consent agenda item and I think about the budget next year and some of the, some of the shortfalls that we're going to have, and things will probably have to be cut, I'm looking at maybe not expanding our scope beyond K through 12 and focusing on what are we doing with our kids, for our kids right now that aren't getting the social emotional, they're socially isolated from their friends and their teachers. I'm looking at, I'm just looking at things that, I know that things might be coming down from the, from federal dollars and then I look to say, well, what things will be cut in the future and what, what things would they look to cut first? And so I'm, I'm just concerned about possibly pulling H, I, and J from the consent agenda item for right now until we can assure parents that we're going to have a school starting in the fall and, and then we're going to get the kids back in school, not to expand what we, we, that's out of our, that's out of our range right now and focus on K through 12 and not necessarily focus on, on, on anything else but getting the kids back in school and having a plan for that. Because every, 100% of the emails I'm getting, not, not 90% or 80%, 100% are let's get the kids back to school in the fall and what's your plan? And so I, I feel like that's, that needs to be a main focus right now. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
So would you, are you asking to pull item on consent, number 17, H, I, and J and vote on those separately?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay, so we've had items 17, H, I, and K will be voted on separately on the consent agenda. Anything else on the agenda? If not, I'd take a motion to approve the agenda as requested for change. Just raise your hand if you move, move. Hey, Deana Horst has approval, second from Ben Jones. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, opposed? Okay, so we have a 9-1 on the agenda. Thank you very much. April minutes, we have minutes that were sent out to you for the April agenda and they're in the agenda. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the April meeting? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the April minutes? Jim McNeese, the second. Jim Porter. All in favor of approval of the April minutes, please raise your hand. Okay, that looks like a 10 zero. I'm having to scan my little faces as we go. Thank you very much. Okay, appreciate going through all those items and next item, we're going to go to Commissioner Watson and he will do his commissioner's report. And I think as you can see from the agenda, this is scheduled to last a good part, if not all of the morning, as we work through several items. So the commissioner's report and then we'll also have our continuous learning. So that will be really lasting all morning. So Randy, welcome and we'll have our report now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this is so different in giving a commissioner's report where I can't look at you and we engage, but this morning ought to be, as Michelle brought up, what, what are, you know, what are the things happening now? What are our plans for the future? And we really want the board to, to know at least what we know right now as we go forward. But let me just say this, you know, the order to close schools occurred on May, on March 17th. If you would have thought on January 17th, were we thinking about closing schools? February 17th, the answer was no. And so I know everyone's saying, as we think about, well, what's going to happen on August 12th, not May 12th, August 12th? And those are a little bit unknowns, but we're going to try to get, get you up to date on everything that we're attempting to do. And so I just appreciate the opportunity. Obviously, this still remains what we want to do. We've been interrupted a little bit by that. We're going to talk about that today, the interruption that's taken place. Also, what our goals are going forward in the future. But in many ways, even during this pandemic, it's been very clear that Kansas is leading the world and the United States and many of the things that we've tried to do. And again, we'll go over that as we go through today. Now, because I can't see all of you, I can see a handful of you. And right now on my screen is Peggy and Kathy Bush and Michelle. Otherwise, I can't see the rest of you. So Kathy, you know, once we get to questions, I'll try to unshare my screen so I can see everyone and take questions. So because of that, you may want to jot down some notes if we go through some things that you have questions on because I, I know you're getting asked a lot of questions and we want to make sure that we have robust discussion today around all of those. Let's start with school lunch and breakfast, because if there was one thing we started with when the disruption happened, it was, are we going to be able to feed students? And indeed Cheryl Johnson and Julie Henry, Jill Wadd, and, well, there's all of those people, all of, all of that team, just award-winning, were right on it, make sure that anyone that needed delivery during, for food service occurred at that time. But I want to tell you what's transpired just over the last couple of years and it's been because of you. Five years ago, as, as you know, there was approximately 30 school districts that did not offer school breakfast. They, they waived that. And as you know, over the last couple of years, you have said, well, if we could do innovative breakfasts and do more second chance breakfast, if we could get, if we could get students that, that maybe engage in grab and go breakfast, what could we do? Could we do something differently? And I am happy to report as of today, there are no school districts asking for waivers for breakfast programs in the fall and that's directly attributable to you. And I know, Mr. Porter, you're extremely proud of that because you did some specific work on that. Be happy again when we do the Q and A part, if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to talk about that. But one of the outgrowth of, of your efforts is, well, we found our kids were hungry coming to school, but they were rushed coming to school. And so they would just rush and skip breakfast because it was before school. But if they could grab it once they got there, that was beneficial. So I want to thank again Cheryl Johnson, the entire team across Kansas. Can't tell Eugene out in your area, what's gone on with, in Dodge City and Garden City is during the last month is nothing short of miraculous. I know that there's been outbreaks of COVID within the, the food service workers there and they pivoted and they moved to other sites and just done outstanding things. So kudos, kudos to all of those people. Let's talk briefly about the Continuous Learning Plan. That's the plan that was generated in less than 72 hours. I know that there'll be some updates on that and of course, as you know, we discussed that quite a bit in April. But over half of the states in the country have asked for a copy of our plan and have copied portions of that plan. So when we say lead the world, lead the United States, the work that over those 40 teachers did absolutely did that. The governor, in fact, called it the gold standard by which we went, went by. And yet there's not anyone on this virtual conference today or listening that would say, this is as good as the brick and mortar. Never was intended to be as good, it's not. But we didn't know we were going to have to do it in 72 hours. The teachers of Kansas put it together. And I will say this, I think it's only possible, that was only possible to do because of your vision and the work that you had done with that vision and redesign and the, the relationship that all of you have with educators across Kansas. I know as I got phone calls from Pennsylvania and Arizona and Alaska, and I could go on and on, Florida, people said, can we get your plan? The answer was always yes. Tell us how you did this in such short time. And what I, what I could tell them, but I could not help them emulate was the work that you had done to change school in Kansas that helped propel when we were in an emergency to do it full scale and, and then that relationship with allowing educators to do it. So I want to thank you for that, of that Continuous Learning Plan. However, as we know, we think about next year, we'll have different questions and we'll have to reach to different levels. Continuous learning we'll talk about later was about finishing the year, about giving grace to parents, students, and educators as we all tried to figure this out. Going forward, we will have a different mission in, in the planning that we have going forward. So at the end of the day, when we really think about going forward, Michelle brought this up earlier, we have to think about what Kansas said make up success. We have a lot of students that, and I will tell you, employees and that without the social interaction, without the face-to-face are depressed or they're in situations at home that are not as safe as, as they could be. So we have students that are struggling socially emotionally. We also have students that are struggling academically. And then of course, the civic engagement part of that. So as we think about going forward and we think about the two big buckets, which is social emotional learning and academic learning, how will we ensure that that learning is there and how will we assure that this ongoing definition is there going forward? It's really important. This is an old quote, you, you old school people, I won't mention who you are, will recognize this. I'm just going to read it. I know you can see it for those who may be listening and not watching the video. This quote, "We can whenever and wherever we choose successfully teach all children whose schooling is of interest to us. We already know more than we need to do this. Whether or not must finally depend on how we feel about the fact that we have not done it so far." This was by a gentleman named Ron Edmonds and he and a colleague named Larry Lazzott started something called the Effective School Movement in the late 1970s. Ron Edmonds unfortunately passed away in the early 1980s and Larry Lazzott carried on his work. And he said, you know what, we know how to help kids learn, it's whether or not we want to go about doing it. I want, I want you to think about that, not only about re, as we think about redesign, but the lessons learned educationally from this pandemic. So what Dr. Lazzott said is that if you look at what, how schools are organized, they're organized around three major functions. First, custodial care of students. Have you seen that? Have you been asked that about parents? We have nowhere to take our kids. Kids need to be in school. I need to go to work. We could, we could play different versions of that tape, but the custodial care of students is still a top priority in schools. And as Ron Edmonds and Larry Lazzott were saying, in the 1970s. Second, that schools sort and select. How do we do that? By grades, A, B, C, D, F. And you saw when the pandemic disrupted ourselves this spring, one of the critical things, especially in the suburban school districts, so think about the Baser Lynn Woods and the, and the Gardner Egerton, Shawnee Missions, Topeka Seaman Silver Lake, the Goddards, the Derbys, is if we freeze grades or if we don't freeze grades, what does that do to students and their scholarship opportunities, their GPA opportunities, their National Honor Society opportunities? If we do freeze grades, how do we ensure that they learn? And I know, Michelle, I know that we had several conversations about that because the sort and selecting has been something that we've all done for a long time. Lazzott also said, schools are about teaching and learning, that every kid ought to learn and it ought to be about teaching and learning. As we go forward, what we're asking schools to do is can we, and by the way, and Lazzott said generally parents put those three in that order when they think about school. As we go forward, I think we're thinking about how can we move number three to number one? Not forgetting the other two, but move number three to number one and how can we ensure learning for every student depending on their path? How do we make sure that kids that cannot learn with, without being in the brick and mortar are ensured that they can be in a brick and mortar school, getting those services? And yes, how do we provide kids with scholarships and grading and how do we take a look at that? I, I pointed this out because this, this work that Lazzott and Edmonds did is 40 years ago and it still rings true to how we're thinking about the redesign of education and what we learn during this time going forward. So as we think again about leading the world, it has to be about the success of each student. And if we've learned anything from the Continuous Learning Plans would be that we have to listen to three voices really, really clearly and really loudly. Number one, the students. As we look later on today about the surveys, what are students telling us about this learning? I will tell you, some kids have said, I learned better. I've learned better in the last several months. We've had a variety of students, we can't even find in some school districts to get their input. And we have a whole host of other students saying, you know, it's okay, it's not what I want. Listen to students. Number two, listen to families. Listen to what families are going through. Because I will tell you, as we think about our own agency, and I'm just thinking about employers everywhere and Wendy Fritz, Fritz, our HR director would tell you this. This pandemic has affected every person, but they've, it's affected people differently. So I have people right now can't wait to get back to work. It's like, let me in the building, let me in the building. I'll take the precautions, let me in the building. Two people, I am scared to death to go in the building. I'm scared I'm going to get this. I am at high risk. I'm worried about dying or I'm taking care of my elderly parent. I'm worried about dying. So listen to families and their situation, students, families, and then let's listen to teachers. Teachers, just like they did the Continuous Learning Plan, if we give them authority with principles and super tints, they will do the right work. If you've given them the framework and they will do this right work if we just let them in the future do that work. Here's the redesigned principles. I just went over those. They are even more important from things that we learn. Michelle said it right off the bat. You know, students need interpersonal, interpersonal and cognitive learning. They need that and that comes so often from the socialization that occurs, whether it's in higher ed or K-12. I mentioned the family, business, community partnerships. We've got to personalize this path for every kid and family going forward and then of course, still making it real world and relevant. So this work will still formulate our plans going forward, no matter what happens in, in the fall. So right now, we're just branding this. We, we don't really have a good name for it. We're calling it Learning for the Future. We have around 70 educators from our staff and from service centers and from teachers that are in kind of the early phases of thinking about next year. But let's just say this, our Continuous Learning Plan focused on finishing the year with opportunities to learn. And you heard those teachers tell you last month, give grace. It will not be perfect. Give grace. No one knew that we were going to be interrupted in the way that we were. And Steve, you know, it makes me think, because we, we use the, the space metaphor a lot. I've gone back and re-watched Apollo 13. They didn't know that half their spaceship was going to tear apart in the middle of that journey. We had been to the moon already multiple times. And yet that journey did not go to the moon and they had to improvise and they had to do things that they weren't planned to do. That's what our Continuous Learning did. But it gave that grace and those opportunities, but it will not be what we do going forward. We'll have some different ideas going forward. First, we are consciously optimistic we'll be back in school in August of 2020 and we're doing everything possible to be ready for that. All right, but again, let's just say that most school districts are going, are going to start school August 12th. Everyone wants to know what will it look like on August 12th, setting here on May 12th? I don't know. Don't know. But we are working hard to ensure that we will be back in August 2020. It is vitally important for us to understand, and I know all of you do, there are, there are students that cannot learn and cannot grow socially emotionally if they are not in the building with a qualified educator, whether that's a counselor or a teacher. It cannot happen. So while that was an opportunity for most school districts to be in small groups of 10, not very many of our school districts executed that and we're going to have to take a look at that over the summer and obviously as we get to the fall. So I think what has been a little bit of misunderstanding is that we're making plans not to be in school. We're not making plans not to be in school. We are making plans to be in school, but we have to make plans for things that we, that are unknown also. It's not that we want those to occur, we'll talk about that, but we're cautiously optimistic we're going to be in school. And as you know, there are only three agencies that can close schools. The state board, nor I, have the authority to close schools. We don't. That can come from the legislature. It can come from the governor and as Steve, Michelle, and Janet know well, it can come from your county health officer because they can be more restrictive. So those are the three entities that can close schools. We have to respond as we did in this time, if they are, and then what the best opportunities are, as I said, to ensure learning for every student going forward. So as we think about this, I'm going to ask you this, all right? And I can't see you, so you can put this in the chat room. And Kathy, I'm going to ask you to give answers, right? This is the interactive part of this morning. I know all of you are waiting. How many students have lost their life in a fire in a Kansas school? You can just type a number in the chat room and Kathy will tell us, Kathy Bush will tell us here in a second, what the answers are. Because I, I can't see it because I'm staring at my screen, full screen of the PowerPoint.
Can you hear me?
I can.
So far, we have a couple of zeros. More zeros.
More zeros.
That looks like a pretty universal answer. There have been no students who have lost their life in a fire.
Well, according to the records that I have found to date, and I won't say that they're entirely accurate, I can find no records that indicate that we've lost a student in a fire in Kansas in school. That doesn't mean that, we may find records of that, someone may have those, but I have not been able to find any records that say that. So second question. It's like a pop quiz today. Oh, it's so good. Uh-oh. The second question come up?
No.
All right, hang on. Technology's working well, except my, going to have to jump back in here.
Well, Randy, maybe you can just read to us the second question.
Okay. See if we can. Let me. Here's the second question. Hopefully. How many students have lost their life in a tornado in a Kansas school? Again, interactive part. Isn't this exciting? It's just like your kids at home on a Zoom lesson. My wife, by the way, is downstairs conducting Zoom lessons with her staff at Sunset Elementary. And my daughter is doing Zoom lessons with, with, and artwork with middle school kids. So we've got, we've got it going on too. But Kathy, what do we see in the chatroom?
We've had one person say one. Everybody else has said zero.
Who said one, Kathy?
Well, Steve.
Steve Roberts is correct. If we had prizes to give out, Steve, we would give out prizes today. So I'm like throwing you a prize across, across virtually. One student in 1923 in Johnson City, not Johnson County, Stanton County, Johnson City. Not much known. It happened right around noon. One student lost their life. So, and yet you One student lost their life. So, and yet you know, when you approve those bond issues, on almost all new bond issues, schools build firewalls. They build sprinkler systems. They build safe rooms for tornadoes that we drill every single month of school around fire drills and then tornado drills during the tornado season. And not very many students have lost their life. Why? Because we put into effect great plans that have mitigated that loss. And so as we go forward, we're asking the finest Kansas educators to assist in some plans that will help us in redesign. They will speed up redesign. And if school were to be interrupted in any way, which we certainly hope does not happen, how will we ensure that every student learns social, emotionally and academically? That is very different than this phase. How do we ensure that every student learns social, emotionally and academically? Group of about 70 educators, I'll just tell you what they're doing in general. They're taking our standards and they're taking assessments. And Steve, you're gonna, I think you're gonna really like this. They're doing a couple of things. They're grade banding those standards into pre-K 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12. They're unpacking those standards into priority standards and extended standards. And then they're combining those standards into humanities, which would be language arts and social studies, and STEAM, science, technology, math, and science and the arts. So that's if in redesign, or if we were interrupted, schools could take a look at combining those standards and ensuring that kids are learning in a variety of multiple ways. We're also taking a look at assessments. That work is being done in this 30 days. It will be handed off to a group of 75 to 100 educators June 1 to start to work on how would that be operationalized in any school from small to large? So Michelle, one of the questions, how would we grade this, right? What are the guidelines? Not that, not that we would ask, hey, Spring Hill, this is how you have to grade. Here's some guidance on how you could grade. Those will be 75 to 100 educators. That, that work will be done by July 10. And then we will give that to every school district. So it will have a lot of guidance into it. And we hope that we don't have to use that guidance other than in our redesign efforts through Apollo and Gemini and Mercury. But they'll also help us in case in any capacity, at any county level, we would be interrupted. And so with that, Madam Chair, I will stop sharing my screen so I can see everyone again. And I will be happy to answer questions. You're going to hear a lot this morning about some remarkable efforts taking place with seniors and PBS specials and all kinds of things. But I wanted to let you know where we've been, where we're going. And we're trying to give as many voices across Kansas to this effort. So.
Thank you, Randy. Make sure I'm on. I think I am. So what we'll do, board members here in just a minute, because I know some of you have questions. And here just a minute, you can either raise your hand or put something in the chat box. I've got mine up and I'm sure Randy will have his up. We'll do either. So Randy, our first priority for August is certainly to have school back in session.
Yes.
Get back to school.
Let's, let's be clear. We have too many kids that cannot learn if we're not back in session. And when I say learn, please understand, I'm talking about your vision of those two buckets, social, emotionally, right? All of those skills and academically. All right? So we're going to do everything we can to be back in school in the fall. And I know in talking to K-Bor and the community colleges and the private colleges, there's, they're working on that plan too. But for instance, what if we do that, but we have to separate kids on a bus, right? What would that look like and how would we stagger to get kids there? So we've got to look at, we've got to look at that. But, but Madam Chair, that is, that is what we are working hard to see if we can, if we can do in August.
And I liked your reminding us that we prepare for drills on a regular basis for events that could interrupt our learning. I mean, we've certainly all been aware of fires that have happened in schools. I mean, some of us that have been in schools know that tornadoes, I mean, all you gotta do is look back not very far at Greensburg. And how destroyed, destroyed that town and that school. And, and they got up and running and back in session. So we do have emergency plans that we practice on a regular basis. So we hope that we don't have to do this again, but I guess now what we're saying is we're including potential planning for pandemic effects again in our emergency plans. Is that why you look at that?
That's right. And, and I don't know why, Ben, you're right in the middle of my screen, so I'm going to apologize. But I look at you and I thought, you know, the most common fires in Kansas schools are started by kids in the restroom. I just thought I'd point that out. Not that Ben would ever have anything to have done that while he was in school. But that's, that's where, and of course, they're, they're extinguished fairly quickly because of standards that have been implemented. And you know, we do that with active shooter drills too, right? Because of safety. So we've gone to pinch points and we've gone to more safety and secure. And it doesn't mean that we're planning on a fire. It means if we had, unfortunately, had a fire, tornado and active shooter, we're trying to do everything we can to mitigate that.
Okay, Randy, Steve has got something in the chat box.
Yes. So I think that what we can do is try to ensure learning no matter happens, Steve. But it won't be the state board's call. What, what you can say is we're going to recommend that the 1116 hours stands. You may have some schools that want to come back earlier in case there is an interruption or go later into the summer or combination. But that, there's only three people, and we, you could, we could say that as a state board, last day start. And then I can just tell you that Wyandotte County, for as an example, or Shawnee County, that county health officer could close schools on September 1. They have that statutory authority. You do not. So what we have to do is give guidance when asked. We certainly can give guidance. And I, I've hopefully been as, as strong in that guidance as I can be for you, that we, we need to have kids in school if possible. And then we need to prepare for those that do have statutory authority, if they execute that. How can we ensure that students learn? That's a different task than what we were posed. Again, I think about that moment in Apollo 13, that when they rocket ship, they went, what went wrong? What went wrong? You know, when NASA went, we don't know. We don't know. That, that moment, they had to try to put, as you remember, the, you know, the square peg in a round hole. We've got more time to plan for this, Steve. So while we may not control the disruption, we're, we're going to hope that it doesn't happen and we're going to try to ensure that learning occurs for every child, no matter what.
Randy, one final question for me, and then I'm sure other board members have questions. Individual, and you, you mentioned this, but individual county health people can close either countywide basis or district wide or school wide. Now, that's not something that happened this year, but that is, that is something they can do. They have the authority to do. Is that correct?
They, they have the authority to close the schools in that county. And it would be the, the district, we have some districts, of course, that have multiple counties in them. So it's where the, in the executive order, it's where the, the school district office is located. So it's, it's the record where the, where they would adhere to. But, but Kathy, that did happen, Madam Chair. Johnson County and Wyandotte County closed schools before the governors did, the governor did in those two counties. And Shawnee and Douglas weren't far behind. So it did happen this year. It's just that the governor then followed suit with all of them. You know, right now, our escalating numbers in Kansas are really centered around four counties. Gene out in your area, Ford and Finney. And then for Steve and Janet and Michelle, it's Johnson and Wyandotte. All other counties seem to be fairly stable right now or declining in cases.
Okay, board members, any additional questions of Randy now, knowing that we're getting ready to go into the update on our continuous learning plan? So Michelle, Michelle Dombrowski has a question.
Trying to unmute. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're looking, so are we focused on the 80% or 90% that are ready to go back without any, what, just, just open up and get back into the schools? And then maybe the 10% or maybe it's even less than that, that maybe are cautiously optimistic about maybe going, but maybe are unsure, they're still scared of the virus, they have some type of an immunity, low immunity. Should we be focused on maybe what we're going to do to adapt to those rather than trying to say we're not going to get 80 or 90% back because we're focused on these 10% that do not want to go back? What, what, what are we, what is the governor looking at or what data is she looking at or the county? What do we need to do to say, we're, we're focused on the majority here? And then we understand that there's a fear or some, some hesitation of going back for a small percentage, because I'm just not hearing the percentage from those at all. And maybe they'll start, maybe I'll start getting emails, but I'm just not hearing that. I think we have to have a, I think we have to have Plan A and Plan B or, or something, just to say, to, to give the, to give the people that really want to go back and they don't want to wear, I mean, I'm hearing that too. They don't want to force the kids to wear masks. I mean, there's a lot of things. And I'm just wondering what's going on behind the scenes with those 70 people that are working on that? Are they talking to the parents or are they, what are we doing on that as far as feedback and input?
Excellent question, Michelle. And there's a lot of things to unpack. So please jump back in here if I don't answer all of them. The work that's being done right now are around our standards and assessment. As you know, our standards are by grade, by subject. And, and so we will continue to have those by grade and by subject. But we're grade banding those and we're, and we're combining those into STEAM and into humanities. And then we're unpacking those into priority and extended standards in case a school district wanted to use those with students that had to be outside of school. So that, so it's really internal work that we're doing right now. When we enter that phase in June, that's where we'll get to some of your questions. And we'll have parents, we'll have educators working on that to give guidance. But we've got to do our work because our work was predicated on a very linear path of, like Lazard and Edmondson said. As to what the governor is looking at, I think, you know, I'm not, can't speak for the governor other than you can read kind of Phase 1, 2 and 3 plan. And I think it's predicated on hospitalizations. I think they're really looking at hospitalizations and I know Gene can probably speak to that because when you look at Ford County in particular, they've had a large number of cases, but the hospitalization rate is fairly low relative to the number of cases. And that was always, Michelle, what I think everyone was talking about when they said flatten the curve. It was don't overwhelm the hospitals so that other people that are sick can, can have a medical society that can respond. And that seems to be working. So I think she's going to look at that. I think that, that she's also going to be looking at, you know, what happens to the virus over the next several day or, excuse me, months and, and, and you know, just how to go about that. We, but I'll come back to, I think, your first question. That's where you have to look at the kid, the parent and the teacher, right? So I know when, when we're talking to our agency staff about coming back, I will tell you, we have about, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this out because I haven't, I haven't run the exact number. We have about 60%, I think, 50, 60% of our staff want to be back at work. And we have others say, I don't, I am fearful for what may, I may catch. And those are sometimes competing interests. And so I think what we would want to look at is we want to be back in school, but then when people say, am I safe to be back in school? We'll have to take precautions around doing that. And those are the things that we're trying, will be trying to work on as we go back. Knowing that, I will tell you, I know I hear from the same people you do right now, put us back in school, put us back in school, put us back in school. But as Brad and Dale can share with you, when I talk to staff about, hey, I think we're going to start coming back, I get a lot of people saying, I don't think it's safe to come back. I, you know, are we going to wear a mask? Are we going to be, do I get to be tested? So I think we're trying to make sure we are back in a brick and mortar, especially for the ones that need to be. And then as you said, Michelle, if there are ones that just can't be, then we want to ensure that their learning can continue. That's important. Hopefully I answered all those. If not, Michelle, ask again, please. I think Deana, Kathy, did you have someone else first?
Yeah, Deana, Dean has a question. And just for your information, Brad has put a little thing in the chat box too about working on another set of guidelines. So folks, you might read that. Deana?
Well, some of my questions have been answered because I'm sure I've received some of this probably different individuals, but they all seem to have the same thing. What I'm hearing you say is that we will work on and the department will work on suggestions of how to move forward and ideas of how, how we can make things work better than maybe they did during the pandemic that we're experiencing. But ultimately, it'll be the local school district that makes the decision about when, how and what everything will look like. Am I correct in that assumption?
Deana, that's really, really good. Yes, except there is a but. There is a but in there that, that you have some control over. But yes, as you know, constitutionally, those seven board members that are elected locally have a lot of constitutional power. Our, our, our things will be guidance to them for things to think about. Kind of comes back to Michelle. But how Olatha responds to that could be different than how Holton responds to that. We'll issue guidelines. Now, there are two, two things. One statutorily and one that the state board has control over. So let's talk about statute. You have to go to school 1116 hours. The legislature waived that for this year. Remember? They waived that before they left. We don't anticipate that we're, that that will be waived for this year. All right, that you're going to have to go to school a minimum of 1116 hours. That's in statute. Second is, you can ensure that there's learning that takes place. Right now, you do that primarily by state assessments and by accreditation, those two models in combination. If we go to more of this model where districts say, I've got to be interrupted, or as Michelle said, we've got some kids in the building, some kids don't want to come in the building. How do we ensure learning? We're working, right now, our staff is working on a cycle that they could send you the data that would show you that the learning is taking place in those two domains. So that you can, you can monitor, ensure that learning's happening on the academic domain and the social emotional. So that coupled with the statutory authority to be there with 1116 hours. Is that helpful, Deana? Otherwise, it is entirely local board's control over whether or not they, they take those guidelines or they go to one model. And let me just, I'm going to digress a little bit, Deana, because I think it illustrates. Here's what people forget in the continuous learning plan. There were three options given to all school districts under the continuous learning plan. You could meet with students, no more than 10 people in a confined space, six feet apart. That was true on March 17. It's still true today. You can do online learning in, in either asynchronous or synchronous, you know, live, like we're doing it, or do these, this work on edge annuity, and you could do packet learning, or you could do any combination of those. Very few of our school districts utilize the ten in a classroom. In fact, some counties prohibited it. They were more restrictive. But we did have some of our small school districts, private and public, that did utilize that. And I've been espousing that, especially for our special needs kids that need that, and for kids that are, but we couldn't find during this time, right? We just couldn't engage them. Bring those, consider bringing those kids back in the summer, ten or less, six feet apart, and that would be the most restricted that you could find. So, there's an example, Deana, where, again, Coffeyville may have said, you know what? We're just not going to do any, anyone in school, even though that was one of the options given to us. We're going to do packet learning, and I don't know that that's what Coffeyville did. I'm just using, I'm just thinking of Coffeyville as an example. Hopefully, that was, that was helpful and illustrative.
One, one other thing that, I don't know whether other people have received this, but I had numerous people emailing me and saying that the department was planning for school to only be two days a week. I just want to put that one to rest. If, unless it is a part of, of the decision-making. But it would seem to me that would be last resort if we were doing that kind of thing, two days in the school district and, or in the school building, and the rest of it outside doing either packets or doing online. So, I just, I guess, to answer those folks' concerns, I either need to say that's, I don't know where that came from, or the only reason that would be existing would be as a last resort. Something we'd have to do to meet some emergency setting.
Thank you, Deana. I, I think that that came from social media, I don't think there's any doubt about that. But it, but it, it misinterprets our plans. Just as I said, we make plans for if there's a fire in a, in a building. We don't make plans for there to be a fire, we make plans if there is a fire. So, we're making plans for all kinds of alternate scenarios. If the legislature comes back in a special session and says, there will be no school in Ford and Finney County, and we haven't made any guidance to give to Ford and, to Garden City and Dodge City, that would be irresponsible on our part. But we also need to give guidance for the exact scenario Michelle talked about. For we're, we're all back in school, but a portion of, of parents and kids say, I don't feel safe. Teachers too, I'm at high risk, I don't feel safe. How do we ensure learning continues? That's what we have to be about. How do we ensure learning continues no matter what occurs? So, we, we, we fully want to be back a hundred percent in school. But some, some parents may not want that. Again, we're, and, and again, the governor, the legislature, or a county health officer in Jackson County, as an example, not saying that would happen, could say, I'm not going to allow schools to open until September fifteenth. If that occurs, then we have to have some guidance that would help out those school districts in that, in that county.
I just thought on this, what Brad said on chat, I'm going to go ahead and read, and then Jim McNeese has a question. He had said, he put on chat, because the folks that are listening obviously can't read this. So, this was from Brad Newens-Warner. Our agency is also working on a second set of guidelines on how to reopen facilities, cleaning, social distancing guidelines, at that time, busing, and et cetera. So, that kind of refers to what Randy was talking about, about potential plans. And Jim McNeese has a question.
Jim, before you go, can I just say this? There's been two other plans that have been widely circulated that have caused some of the social media, Ohio and Missouri. All right, I will just tell you, all right, I'm, I'm going to be as bold as I can telling you this. There are many things in that Missouri plan that I do not like. And one of them is, there would be no fine arts. We wouldn't do the bands and the choirs and, and the arts. We wouldn't do career in tech ed, we would just do the core. That is not good education. That's not ensuring kids have a good, adequate education. That's not being, putting the best teachers, parents together and say, go figure this out, how we would do it, right? That, so I just want, want you to know that I know that's caused some heartache, because people have said to me, are we going to follow the Missouri plan? You know, good for them. We'll have a Kansas plan, just like we did in this, and it will be devised by Kansas. And it will ensure, I think, learning for all. So, I'm sorry, Jim, but I wanted to make sure that I got that out.
Jim?
Not a problem, Randy, good, good comment. Not a problem, Randy, good comment. One of the issues that I've seen and have dealt with is the multiplicity of different agencies, and use agency in a broad sense of the word, groups, organizations who are gathering in different ways and confuse the public. So, for instance, you know, you can deliver, you can, at food banks and so on, give food away, and there's, you know, some close proximity, but you can't do, you know, parades. But there's bigger issues than that. Are we communicating and in any way partnering with other agencies? I know we'll probably be talking to the Kansas State Activities Association. The state, we had, Deana and I had a similar conversation to this with the Board of Directors just a couple of weeks ago, online, not in person, but also hospitals and community agencies that are, are part of our, not part of our daily conversation. You know, they have a lot to say on it. You know, are we talking to those other partners, both close and maybe partners that we don't see as partners typically, but certainly have something to say about this? And how they react is going to influence how we react. Thank you.
Jim, excellent question. Let me just say this. Our system of governance, and I'm not talking about state board, I'm talking about county governance and city councils, and from the federal and the state level, was never set up for a nationwide pandemic. It, it was set up to handle things locally, right? And so, now you've got all these different players that, that can give advice, and in some ways have statutory authority to give. So, Brad and Dale and I are spending ninety percent of our day, every day, on pandemic-related issues, either immediate, like graduation plans, or planning for the fall. There's only about ten percent of my work that would be what I would normally be doing in the month of May. And so, Jim, I can just say, case, yes, school districts, we've never had a better relationship with private school systems than we do during now. But school districts, I, I was on the phone with four superintendents this morning, and I've answered three emails from questions that have come up, that they need responses to. And someone said to me, and Dale, this the other day, who's your COVID person response? You're looking at him, all right? We have no one, we don't have someone. And so, we haven't had time to delve deeply into all the other groups. And that doesn't mean that we're not having conversations with DCF on kids that are current, or we can't find. It doesn't mean that we're not talking to, you know, legislators, we are. But to the extent that all of us are partnering and really thinking deeply, it's, it, it just isn't happening because of, of the immediacy of the issues surrounding it. That's just honest answer. And Ben is right, that did come from the Missouri State School Boards Association. And Dr. Hyam has indicated that the Kansas School Board Association will not be coming up with a plan similar to that.
Okay, Anne Mall has a question, and Jean Clifford after that.
Thank you, Randy, it was really comprehensive, and I, I appreciate it. There's, actually, I haven't minded getting all these emails, because it's given me a chance to talk to some parents I hadn't met. But there are so many good resources out there, and, and I know in our last two weeks on NASV calls, the topic has been, you know, opening schools and sharing ideas from all over the world about different ideas about how to do that. So, I know it's our job to give guidance and put everything out there that schools could use. But let's say, for example, your county health person said, you could only have fifty percent of your kids in the building at one time. Would it not, in the final say, be up to the local school board to determine how that looks, not us? I mean, we don't tell them how to schedule now, or when kids can be in the building. So, I wouldn't anticipate we would put out any mandates, but give them lots of ideas about how that might look, and they get to pick. Is that, am I on the right track with that?
Yes, absolutely, and they ultimately decide, because they have that authority. But, but what we will do is give guidance, and we will also give counsel to them, and try to help explain whatever the, the laws are, whatever the parameters are as they go through it, because a lot of superintendents and principals and teachers have asked us. So, we would give guidance, but again, what you, only thing you can do is ensure that learning continues. That's what we want to do. So, that again comes right now through accreditation, state assessments. Accreditation's going to stay, Michelle will talk about that later. But what you have to wrap your head around is, can we ensure learning differently than just the old state assessments? Steve, you have to smile about that, because we're, we're, thirty days, we're trying to really accelerate that over the redesign. And Anne, that's where I think the state board can really not only give guidance, but they can ensure for, for, for kids and families that learning is taking place.
Yeah, I think what you said about giving grace, this nine weeks was absolutely important. But in the fall, we really have to jump on accountability. We can't be letting it said that, well, whatever grade you had, you get to keep, and then everybody bails out. So, focusing on our job of standards and the things you're talking about, I think is just right on target. So, thank you.
Jean Clifford?
I just wanted to say that in Western Kansas, we would really, really appreciate the flexibility having a blanket closure out here when many of our counties had zero or very low numbers. And, and really, right now, only Finney, Ford, and Seward are problematic. We're really hoping that, that, that the, in August, it will look at, they'll look at county by county, and, and let the county health officers make those determinations with their, their schools, rather than just having a statewide edict that, that affects everybody, even those who, who are not experiencing any cases. Do we have any indication, either from the legislature or from the governor, as to what their thoughts might be come August?
We do, from the governor. Jean, do you take a look at the governor's phased plan? We're in Phase One right now, and the, and I'm going to give you the earliest dates, the earliest dates. So, these, Phase One may be extended, that's her decision. But Phase Two could start as early as Monday, May eighteenth. And that then goes to thirty people in, in a group and opens up other businesses. And then, as early as June one, we could be, I think, at sixty or ninety. And by as early as June fifteenth, we could be in Phase Four, which is returning to normal. Now, again, those phases may get pushed back, that's her phased plan. The legislature comes back on May twenty-first, and they may want to give additional guidance. And then, I'm on the phone with lots of county health officials. I can tell you that some of them are adamant about, you know, being more tight, others are wanting to be more open. But I, that's why I'm cautiously optimistic that we will be more open than not come August. That's assuming, of course, we don't have a huge spike. You know, if you look at the Spanish Flu of nineteen eighteen, it, it was the second wave that was overwhelming. It wasn't the first wave. So, again, I know, I know Dr. Norman is looking at that. But right now, as we said on May twelfth, Jean, the governor's plan would have us, if everything goes according to plan, more fully open by, by late June.
Okay, but that plan is more of a blanket plan, is to cover the entire state. Going past the governor's plan, is there any indication of a, a full statewide plan that, that all counties would have to adhere to?
I, I, I'm not, I'm not aware of that. I, I think if you look, if you look at the original federal plan, Jean, that came out in the phases, it was, it was, of course, states can do this if they hit these benchmarks. And almost every state ignored that, those benchmarks. So, I don't know if, for example, if, if the legislature or the governor would say, if you don't have any active cases, or they've been decreasing or hospitalizations, you can, you know, you have more authority. I think there, there could be something like that. But I think there's a lot of people with a lot of ideas. But the only thing that I've seen for sure is the governor's plan, that the legislature's coming back on the twenty-first. So, I don't know any more than that.
Well, just felt flexibility, I think, is the key, and, and to allow, like we do with so many things, local control to, to lead our districts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, board members, and Randy, thank you. I think we'll conclude the commissioner's report, and I'm going to read the citizens' open forum. And then, I think we'll take a quick break before we go into our next agenda item, which was supposed to start a little while ago. And this is the one that Brad and Michelle will be doing. So, we'll take a little break before we do that one. Citizens' Open Forum is an opportunity for citizens to share their views about topics of interest or issues being concerned, concerned by the state board. This month, because of our virtual situation, we have accepted written comments. I know a number of folks, we have received a number of emails, I think Michelle referenced those, and Deana referenced those. I think we've all gotten a number of emails from our constituents, which hopefully this information has helped them. We also have received, just I believe it was this morning, Peggy received a letter from KNEA to the state board. And I'm going to ask that she send it to all board members. The title of it is Leading Schools During the Coronavirus Crisis. And I'll just read the first paragraph or two, so you get the gist of it, and then Peggy will send that on to you, so you all have a copy. Says, Kansas NEA would like to take this opportunity to express our gratitude for the prompt measures that the Kansas State Board of Education has taken in response to the coronavirus crisis. School safety and health are paramount during these uncertain times. From the onset, the board has acted to ensure the safety of students and educators by closing schools statewide, followed by prompt action to ensure statewide guidance was provided by bringing teachers together to develop the continuous learning plan. Well, now, we didn't close schools, we all know that, we've talked about that, but we certainly, the action to provide the guidance. So, there's a nice letter from KNEA, and I'll ask Peggy to send that on to, to board members, so you're able to read. Okay, board members, I think we'll take, my computer says eleven oh nine, why don't we take a ten-minute break? And we'll be back, and we'll start with Agenda Item Eight, which is Update on the Continuous Learning Plan Implementation and Survey Results. And as I mentioned, Brad Newens-Warner and Michelle Miller will lead that portion. So, we'll take a quick ten-minute break. Thank you. Okay, I think we'll call the meeting back to order. Looks like just about everybody's on. Like to thank everybody, I know we had kind of an extended conversation with Like to thank everybody. I know we had kind of an extended conversation with the commissioner's report today. But that information was all important. We've had lots of questions. It certainly is foremost on our mind as far as not only how do we finish out this school year, which is rapidly coming to a close, but then what do we do starting the next school year? So appreciate everybody's questions and the commissioner being able to give us some good answers. Okay, we are moving on now. We have the update on the Continuous Learning Plan implementation and survey results. So we've got Brad and Michelle, and they're, have this screen shared already for us.
All right, well, I'm, my job is to always try to get you back on schedule, so I'm going to quickly turn it over to Michelle. She's going to share with you between last board meeting and this board meeting. We know school districts had to quickly pivot to implement plans. So we followed up with them a few weeks later, just to ask how things were going and get some responses. And I'm going to turn it over to Michelle and let her share with you just some things that we've learned since the last board meeting. So, Michelle?
Thank you. Madam Chair, can you give me a thumbs up if you can see the screen okay and if you can hear me okay? Thank you so much. Members of the board, Commissioner Watson, thank you. This is an opportunity for us to take a look at the continuous learning that our school systems, including the private systems, have made available to their students. And I think it's important for us to keep in mind, we asked for this survey report in early May. Since then, they've been at it two more weeks and had only been at it about four to five weeks prior to that. So you had asked for some information regarding three specific areas, and I hope this gives you an opportunity to review that and to have any conversation you may need to have. I'm happy to stand for questions at the end. So this, this first slide, as you can see, this is the total number of districts reporting. And what they're saying is that these were their barriers. They said, "Lack of internet service by two hundred and thirty-five of our systems, inactivity of students, or truancy issues by two hundred and sixty-three were issues." And you can see some other areas as well. I wanted to give you, if you can see my screen, the interpretations of these slides is what's most powerful, I believe, to you all. This particular slide, we ask our systems to ask their families, was the issue of no internet or limited access to internet broadband service a problem for you? The interpretation of the slide tells you that two hundred and sixty-one of our systems reported that a small number of their families did experience limited internet access due to lack of service provider. So the interpretation of the slide, we, we ran around the tree a lot to try to provide the best way for you all to get this information and to have it presented to you easily. I, I give kudos to the public and private systems. Three hundred and forty-three total reported. If I can publicly just say thank you, they've been really engaged at any point that we have needed information from them. So this one is monetary resources and issues concerning monetary resources. You may or may not be aware of a device called a hotspot. A hotspot can be, is a little piece of equipment that can be delivered to you and your family and increase your availability of internet access. And for some of our homes and families, that, that, what was an issue. So two hundred and thirty-three of the systems reported that a small number did experience internet access issues. You can see that ninety-two, up to thirty percent of families experienced some of those issues due to monetary resources. What you have on this slide is the families that did not have any access to a device. If a small number of families did not have access to a device. Most of our homes and families do have their cellphone handy, but that doesn't actually provide a very good learning device for students. The screen is small, hard to interact, hard for mom and dad to be a part of the viewing as well. So there were some reports of families that, that had issues in that regard. So this is an interesting slide to me. This is where we had some homes and families or some systems say, we made huge changes. We made huge, huge changes from the beginning of the plan to the, in, to where we are now. And I think what I want you to understand here, because I did make phone calls to these systems, and the information I received back from them indicated that it was our intent all along to increase the availability of online or internet access for students. And we had some issues with that. So there were some adjustments, some pivots, some changes, some things that took place along the way. So I don't know their goals and the intention of continuous learning was the same all along. However, as they increased access with devices, with broadband, with internet services, they did, they did have an increased use of more online learning opportunities for families. But I, I, I'm comfortable in the conversations that I had with the systems that I visited with, that they did not make any drastic or tremendously huge changes in their delivery for students. So I hope that gives you some reassurance. I know one of your next items is approval of continuous learning plans. There are none that I feel I need to bring to you for dramatic changes that you need to reapprove at this point. I think, I think there's a chance that as I was reviewing the slides, I didn't start at the very beginning of my presentation, so let me finish and then I'll go backward. Sorry for that. I was nervous about sharing my screen with you. This particular slide continues to talk a little bit more. The first, this one, was at the elementary level. What dramatic change did you make at the elementary level? This is the percentage of change at the middle level. And then the high school level. Most of our high schools felt fairly confident in delivering instruction online because one-to-one initiatives that have been around for a very long time have put devices into the hands of students. So I think it's important to see that difference between elementary and high school. And for a lot of our elementary folks, it was about getting appropriate devices. Due to the situation, how do we deliver those in the most sanitary means for families? So, so that is what those three slides were a, a conversation around. Now, we're back to elementary and the, how, the delivery of online. So two hundred systems reported that the large majority of their learning at the elementary level is taking place online. The majority of systems reported that middle-level learning is taking place online. And you'll see that this slide indicates the same for high school students. Not applicable would mean that that system doesn't have a high school or doesn't, that maybe they're a, they are only a K-eight and they don't have a high school. So that's why we gave them that option for not applicable. So the packet learning piece, th- this was another space that was interesting to me. For example, one of the systems that indicated they had made a dramatic change in their delivery model, this is why they made that dramatic change. They started immediately getting packets out to students because they were so excited to keep learning going. So they brought their folks together, they got the packets out. But at the same time those packets were happening, the process of increasing the internet and broadband and online opportunities for those families was happening as well. So they lessened their packet delivery a little bit and were able to move more to the online system. The goal of continuous learning, it was more about the logistics that changed for our systems. At the middle level, packet learning, a small, a zero to twenty-four percent of our systems, two hundred and seventy-seven of them are saying that they're not doing a high number of packets at the middle level. They're, they're doing online learning. And you'll see this as well at the high school level. So a small number said that they were delivering packets at the high school. Two hundred and sixty-one systems said, "We have a little percentage of our learning that's taking place in packets." What happened is, as I spoke with principals, with superintendents, some students didn't like the online delivery model. They wanted that packet. They wanted that hard copy. And again, I'll give kudos to the school systems for differentiating that opportunity for students. They, they've done a phenomenal job at that. So here are your evaluations on face-to-face for elementary students. There's some, there, there are a large number of districts, three hundred and fifteen systems out of the three hundred and forty-three that are delivering a small amount of face-to-face learning for students. I imagine that's mostly taking place for their students on IEPs or with some very specific or differentiated needs during this time. At the middle level, three hundred and six of our systems said a small percentage of the learning was being delivered face-to-face. At the high school level, you're seeing the same thing. A small number of two, two hundred and ninety districts are saying that a small amount of our learning is taking place face-to-face. So there are some opportunities happening. So be, let me, i- if you don't mind, let me go all the way back to the beginning because I think I missed. Okay. All right, we're good. So we also asked our systems, and I love the conversation you all had earlier about KSDE because the, our systems were so complimentary of the board, of the state board's work in encouraging and supporting KSDE to continue to provide the, the learning opportunity for our students. However, they are saying, our school systems are saying, "We need professional development for online learning." What, how do you engage students in virtual classrooms? But look at this personalized differentiated opportunity. They said they want more professional growth and learning opportunities for personalized learning. That's amazing. That's a redesign concept. Differentiation in a virtual environment, family engagement, these are all things that have to do with our redesign efforts and I don't know if you all have heard this as much as I have, but for systems who were involved in redesign prior, they said, "Bring it on. We'll pivot, we'll learn, we'll get this out there for our kids and won't have a problem." So they want more support from KSDE. Our service centers can be a super resource to us in this regard. But we gave them an opportunity to say, "Where are the spaces and places that we can be more helpful to you?" Let me switch gears. The, I love this slide. This slide tells you that this is breakfast, this is lunch, compared to a year ago. We are serving nearly the same amount of breakfast we did a year ago, but this year it's under such trying circumstances. Think about all the things we have to do to be able to protect our students and families and get a, a good lunch or a good breakfast or a good supper out to them. Breakfast, we're, we're serving, kudos to our child nutrition and wellness staff. Children are being fed. Lunch, we're serving a lot of lunches this year, obviously. A year ago, we were serving more in our nor- normal circumstances, but I just, I'm, amazing, amazing the work child nutrition and wellness did from the minute we started this to keep providing food for our families. This is supper. This is supper compared to a week ago, or a year ago, I'm sorry. Six districts are reporting that they serve supper, but look at the number of meals that they are, that they are serving. So with that, Madam Chair, I would stand for any questions that you have. I'll keep my slides up here so that if you all need to refer to another slide, I can quickly get you to that space. I can't see the chat either, so you might have to.
Yeah, board members, with Michelle doing that, you're going to have to put your questions in the chat if you have questions for, for Michelle. First of all, Michelle, thank you for getting that data together. I think you had a pretty short turnaround when it came in to when you had to prepare it. So I have a feeling there were, there's probably, could be some more analysis of it. When you have a little time, it, it'll be kind of interesting to, to look. I, I'd, I'd be interested to know, you know, are school districts who are not doing as much online, are we talking rural, are we talking urban, what kind of school districts are we talking? I think that might help us to, and I don't know if you have the capability, but I know you didn't have time to do all that analysis, but it might be.
Bring up, yeah, thank you. You bring up a good point. There is a lot of data that we can dive deeper into at some point to learn from. I will tell you, the narrative responses, they, 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 they continue to ask for all things relative to teaching virtually. We, this was an opportunity to listen to students, to families and to the field. Social emotional needs are huge, and that's narrated in the comments. Training for administrators, for families to be engaged in this, there, there's a great deal of information for us to be able to use and to move forward should we need to in this environment again.
Okay, so board members, again, if you have questions, if you put them in the chat, because since we still have the shared screen up, I can't see all of your faces. So if you raise your hand right now, I can, oh, wait a minute, there, we've gone back. Okay, now we're back. And so if you do have questions for Michelle, you can just raise your hand and we'll all acknowledge you. Anybody? Okay, well, we look like we're, we're good at this point in time, Michelle. So appreciate your efforts to bring that data to us and it'll be good to dig into that data a little bit, and I'm sure you'll probably bring us some information back at another time. And as you shared with us, our next item would have been to act on the Continuous Learning Applications. But when you did, did delve into that, you didn't see that any had done enough changing to have them come, those plans come back to us, correct? Okay, all right, thank you very much. And we'll go on to item number ten, which is to report on current partnership activities. And we've got at least part, three partnership activities that we're going to go into, starting with Parent Camp. And Brad, I think you're going to start us on this, and we've got some other folks online that are going to join us also. So welcome, and we look forward to hearing about these different activities that have started as a result of our continuous learning. So, Brad?
Yes, so I will, you know, I've, I've heard in the past, don't ever let a crisis, you know, there's always things that you can learn from it. And there's, you know, three big initiatives that, that we've been working on as an agency and as a state that a month ago was not even on our radar. So we do, would like to give you an update on three big initiatives that have really helped us move forward and serve our students and our, our communities and teachers better. One of those being Parent Camp, and I'm going to have Tammy Mitchell give you an update on that with some guests, followed up by our senior group, leadership group initiative. And then we'll follow it up with Jay giving an update on a partnership that we've been working closely with, with public broadcasting. So Tammy, I'm going to let you start with an update on the Parent Camp work.
Well, thank you, Brad, and good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Today, I have with me Laura Gilchrist, who is the Vice President of Parent Camp. And one of the projects that we worked on over the last few weeks was to host a virtual Parent Camp, and we'll talk, tell you what that means. And also a Parent Camp Experience, where we helped districts and service centers to experience what it would be like to host a Parent Camp. I think the data that Michelle showed earlier shows that our districts are crying out for professional development on how to engage parents and families, and this was just one mechanism that we piloted and it went really, really well. So I'm going to share my screen and you should see my slides that say Parent Camp Pilots. Madam Chair, can you wave at me if you can in fact see my desktop? Super, thank you so much. So Laura, take it away.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Tammy. Let me tell you all, this has been a beautiful and powerful experience with Kansas families, schools and communities that took place in a very short time. Right now, I'm going to paint for you a picture so the pilot makes sense when we share that. And to paint that picture, I'm going to share three things, and those three things are, what is Virtual Parent Camp? How is it different from traditional family engagement? And what is, what does the hour look like? So jumping right in, what is Virtual Parent Camp? It's where family, school and community connect. It's where family, school and community connect, strengthen and collaborate for kids. Our mission is to help every single family, school, community become one team for kids. We are an official partner of the U.S. Department of Education and have been since 2016. And we're, uh, it's a proven system that works. Next up, how is parent camp, how is virtual parent camp different from traditional family engagement? That's the big question. Three things. So number one, compliance conditions are replaced by partnership or equality conditions. So it's about autonomy, choice and voice. Every single person there is a connector, a leader and a learner for their kids. Number two, topics and purposes are driven by the collective at the end of each parent camp. So it's no longer on the educator's shoulders. And number three, relational trust is generated in parent camps. And this is the currency for partnership. And it's the, what you have to have in order to do the strengthening and the collaborating, um, which is purpose-driven work that leads to collective efficacy, family, school, community, collective efficacy. Finally, what does the hour of a virtual parent camp look like? Well, first of all, before you do the virtual parent camp, you invite family, school and community, not just parents. Then when they arrive, they arrive to the Zoom room, we're all in the main room. We set up, um, the conditions and we build just kind of a sense of community. And then everybody gets teleported to their individual rooms that they wanna start in. Once they're there, it's a dialogue, it's about the room, it's not presentations, right? And people can talk when they want to, listen, support each other. And they can go anywhere they want at any point in time. Finally, they get teleported back to the main room and this is really important part as well. This is reflection, gratitude, and we put all their ideas and thoughts and, um, everything up for everybody to see and people walk out with all this evidence that, wow, we really do wanna work together. And it's really enjoyable, actually, like, when's the next one? So that, that's, uh, yeah, that's the overview there, painting that picture.
All right, so, um, I've just received a text from the Commissioner saying he would prefer if I change how I'm displaying this, so hopefully you can see it much better now. Yes.
Yeah, so I've got two quotes here that kind of sum up our mission. Um, the first one is that everything that's needed to create a bright future for kids is already within every single family, school, community in Kansas. It's just a matter of coming together in the right way. And the other one is a Brene Brown quote that, um, you'll see those two words, connection and relationship, which are key, and the other three that we, we focus on every parent camp is seen, heard and valued. And people, we set it up and people leave feeling seen, heard and valued, and that is the key.
So we took this, um, wonderful virtual parent camp idea and we marketed it to a small group of districts just in the Sedgwick County area. And we said, hey, if you want your parents to be part of this pilot, we're going to host a virtual parent camp. And so, um, what we did is we, um, selected some facilitators from our, um, Continuous Learning Task Force, teachers from that group and some KSDE people. And we, um, hosted, um, around, um, fifty families for an elementary night and sixty families for a secondary night. And the way it worked was we brought them all together in one big Zoom room like we're in now. We gave them, uh, kind of a tutorial on how to use Zoom and how to use the chat. Talked a little bit about some bigger ideas and then we broke them into breakout rooms where they talked with each other with a facilitator about any of, anything they really wanted to talk about regarding, uh, this continuous learning time. What were their challenges, what were their successes? And, um, what I'm showing here are just some comments from the feedback. And so, um, what, what was really overwhelming is how many of our, the parents on this, um, virtual parent camp felt like they were terrible parents because they couldn't figure out how to manage working from home and having three little kids that were trying to do continuous learning. They, they, they felt like terrible parents. And then when they started talking together and supporting each other, they realized that they weren't alone. And they appreciated, um, the opportunity to just talk to each other. And I thought that that was just really, really powerful that, um, it was an open forum. They could have used the time to complain, they did not. They were looking for ways to get better at helping their child learn from home. So that went really, really well. Um, like I said, we had an elementary night and a secondary night. And then we decided that, um, because we wanted the conversations to really happen, we knew we couldn't have just like a, a big parent camp, uh, virtually with like three thousand parents. We knew that if we really wanted to spread this, we needed to empower districts to host their own parent camps and maybe bring along our service center partners so that they could help districts. So the following week, super fast, the very next week, we hosted what we call a parent camp experience. And for this, we had about, oh, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty different district people and service center people on for a parent camp experience where we took them through what it would be like to be in a parent camp. We broke them out into breakout rooms. We talked about, um, facilitation tips and, and things that they might need to know if they wanted to host their own. And then this was their feedback. Um, I, I thought it was really powerful. They came away saying, you know what, there is a different and a better way to engage parents and families than what we've been doing before. And this was one of those mechanisms. Um, to create a judgment-free experience that helps parents and families ask questions. It was easy to do and, um, it's a valuable collaboration. And so since then, um, Laura, take it away. Since two weeks ago, the next step.
So jumping, jumping, uh, following what, what Tammy just said, the very next week then, Cindy Couchman, Assistant Superintendent in Bueller said, I'm scheduling, I wanna do this right out of the gates. So we jumped in and collaborated to have a, you know, just an immediate pilot right after the experiences. And, uh, yeah, so we trained them up and they did it and I have two quotes to share. So the first one is Katie Perez. She is a parent and a consultant with ESDAC. And she said two things that stand out to me. Level playing field. And then the very last sentence, I felt heard, seen, connected, loved and valued. And that kind of feeling goes home with parents, right? And it impacts kids. The second one is from Cindy herself. Um, she said, uh, two things, two things that stand out is we're not alone, we're on the same team. And the other one is providing parent choice, voice and choice in the experience was critical to its success. And that is that equality conditions piece.
I've also heard of several districts who have contacted me who have hosted their own parent camps with breakout sessions and, um, some of the comments that I'm hearing from around the state is once they've engaged parents in this way, they never wanna go back to those old sit and get meetings where they're trying to bring everyone in and tell them all the same information. So we definitely believe that we're going to be, um, expanding on this idea in the future, definitely under the redesign principle of family, business and community engagement. And, um, you should have access to these slides. These are all resources for your perusal, um, at your leisure about virtual parent camp, about, uh, continuous learning and, um, and about parent camp in general. So with that, that is our virtual parent camp pilot that took place really, really fast. So, um, I welcome any questions, but, um, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share.
Yes, thank you very much.
Brad, do you wanna do questions or do you wanna move on and do the senior leader first? Are you there, there's Brad? Don't see you, but. You're up, you're on.
I couldn't tell, it was, every time I'd go to unmute, someone would unmute me and I'd click it off, so, not fast enough. I think we could go on with the seniors since we have all the seniors here.
I, I, I see what people do, look like they're probably seniors.
Yes, so, um, just to remember, a few weeks ago, we had reached out, um, to school districts and had them nominate some of their best and brightest. Uh, we began our first one with sixty-four seniors all across the state. After that, then we narrowed it down to a couple, uh, by region across the state, which many of those are on here today. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jay, who has worked closely with this group, to provide an update on, um, how this initiative's been going. So Jay?
Great, thanks Brad. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and the State Board for this opportunity to, uh, present to you, uh, what I, what I'm calling the epitome of your vision. Students that fulfill all the, the benchmarks that the board has set in Kansas for a successful high school graduate. So, um, it's been wonderful for Denise and I to, to be able to interact with these students during this troubled time for them. Uh, but I read something this morning from John Gordon. I just wanted to read to the group to kind of set the context. And it really kind of captures to me what these students exemplify. While you will always be remembered for this painful time, while you will remember this painful time, you'll also be the generation that doesn't take anything for granted. You know what it's like to have something taken away from you in a moment. And as a result, you will appreciate what if, what you have and when you have it. And you'll also value your relationships, make the most of your opportunities and create a great future. So I think that really epitomizes this group. Uh, we've met the last two Friday afternoons, including last Friday afternoon from three-thirty to five. And most of them, that was their official last day of school. So I remember back to my last day of, of senior year, we weren't meeting with some adults planning something statewide. So I really appreciate this group. Um, they wanted to create some sort of tribute for all seniors across the state, but they didn't just wanna come up with their own ideas. Uh, one of the seniors, Deshaun Lewis, felt like it was necessary to, to survey the rest of the state, all the seniors across the state. So, uh, twenty-six-hundred responses later, this group had plenty of ideas to jump into and identify those which were most impactful and could happen yet in May. So here in a minute, I'm gonna have Olivia Ziegler and Annie Bogart, uh, talk a little bit about what that event looks like, what that tribute looks like. But before I get to that, I want to introduce each of our students. So as I say your name, if you could please just wave your hand, or you can do a little dance if you want to, that's great too, but just wave your hand. And, uh, so the board can recognize all of the, all the students that are doing this great work. So, uh, Lucy Snyder, some people, there's Lucy, uh, Kari Stegman. There's Kari. Uh, Drew Starbuck. There he is. Uh, Deshaun Lewis, who may not have been able to join with us today. Um, Annika Sen. Cody Savage. Awesome, there's Cody. Elizabeth. Got ya? Did I get that right, Elizabeth? Right, all right. Um, and then obviously Annie and Olivia. Uh, some members who weren't able to join us today, in fact, one is preparing for an AP exam. And that's Pooja Jane from Blue Valley West High School. We have Amanda Fanavong from the Wichita area, Isabel Taylor and Callie Hutchinson. So they weren't able to join us today, but they've been part and parcel of this group. So it's my privilege now to turn it over to Olivia first and then we'll follow that up with Annie. And they can discuss what they're planning to honor the Kansas High School Class of 2020. So Olivia, take it away.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Scott. And like he said, thank you all so much for this opportunity to share with you. Um, so the senior leaders decided in our last meeting that one of the best ways to honor other seniors across the straight, state is through social media. So because of this, we decided that part of our project will be trending the hashtag Kansas Class of 2020 on various social media outlets. So with this hashtag, we'll be encouraging our statewide peers to post images of themselves like in their graduation robes and prom attire or, um, even participating in events like donating blood, donating food or writing notes to essential workers and just, um, other community services like that. And so along with these images and hashtags that they post, um, we also want to encourage the other students to write about their future plans in the captions, just to really share their stories and help bring us together throughout this nationwide struggle that we're dealing through.
Okay, so I'm gonna take, the unmuting means it's my turn. Um, thank you, Olivia did a really great job of explaining our social media aspect. So along with that, with this project, we really want to acknowledge really what's happened to seniors across the state and show, be able to show them support by any means possible. So we've been reaching out to what we like to refer to as famous Kansans. Um, so we've been reaching out to Chiefs players, Sporting KC players, um, and then other figures, um, across the state of Kansas. Uh, and we have been asking them to make a video or a short announcement, kind of, um, showing support and recognizing what seniors are going through. And with this little support, we would like to show these videos on May twentieth, which is a day we would kind of like to label as a Senior Appreciation Day. And where families and communities will be encouraged to celebrate their seniors and the Class of 2020. So like Olivia said, utilizing social media and utilizing the platforms that these figures of our state have. Um, we believe that that unification will allow our class to get more closure and finish what they started, right? In a celebratory manner. And speaking of recognition, we really want to thank you all for recognizing us and recognizing our voice and being given the chance to work on a project to celebrate, um, our classmates statewide. So thank you very much.
Okay, Olivia and Annie, thank you so much for sharing that. And to the, to all the seniors that could join us today and all those out there that have participated in this project, thank you so much. It, it really warms the heart to know that you're willing at this time, you're dealing with your own loss, but you're willing to give back to the rest of the state and, and do something to recognize the Kansas Class of, of 2020. So phenomenal work and it's just, we're, we're very excited for May twentieth to, to get here and to, uh, see all the great things that this group has planned. I do wanna be clear that this is, this is a tribute for seniors planned by seniors. This is not something that the school districts need to feel like they need to be a part of planning. They've got their own local recognition and tributes going on. And this is not meant in any way to replace any of that. This is just something, again, for seniors planned by seniors. Um, totally student-driven. And it's, it's simply a way to honor the Class of 2020. There will be promotional messages coming out this week, so we would ask everybody on this call and, and all the schools across the state to share it across your networks to really promote that May twentieth. That's, that's the, the, uh, Senior Celebration Day, as Annie alluded to. And just check your social media outlets, uh, your channels on May twentieth and get involved and, uh, spread the, spread the good word and help us all celebrate a wonderful class of graduates in Kansas. I will end with this, that one of the ideas submitted, again, over twenty-six-hundred responses across Kansas. My, my favorite one is free T-shirts that say Senior Skip Day Champions. I think that really captures this time. This group really are the Senior Skip Day Champions. That was a, that was a frontrunner, but they went with the, uh, but anyway. So I think it's, it's just great to be part of this group and I'm so happy they were able to join and, uh, interact with the board today.
You know, I, I'm gonna take just a minute of, of liberty here and I, I got the opportunity to, uh, sit in on the South Central Kansas Group of Senior Leaders and, you know, it was so wonderful, what a great group of young people. And, you know, after we got off that, that, towards the end of that conversation, I just, I got, had to share with the group. I said, you know, there's, there's some folks in some older generations, which I'll include myself in that. And some of these folks say, oh, this younger generation, well, what, what's this country gonna be like? On and on and on. And I have to tell you, this group of 2020, we're gonna be all right. This is a great group of young people. And, uh, they know what's going on and they've got some ideas for the future. And, uh, I have to say, I'm not worried one bit. We've got a great group of young people coming up. So appreciate all these young folks from the Class of 2020. You have had to go through quite an ordeal this year, but you're gonna be stronger with that perseverance for it. So thank you, all you seniors, thank you so much. I believe so. So thanks, seniors, again.
Yes, thank you so much, guys. Okay, so we'll just jump right into our update on the KSDE Continuous Learning PBS Alliance, Public Broadcasting Service Alliance. So this new initiative started really at Brad's level with Dave Heineman, who represents PBS in the legislature. He got with Brad, and they talked about how they could partner through this time of continuous learning as the continuous learning guidance was being developed. And so that has since broadened to now including our three Continuous Learning Task Force Chairs, I call them the triumvirate. And I'm not sure they're comfortable with that title, but they definitely are worthy of it. It also includes several teachers from the task force, but also others, teachers across the state who weren't part of the task force now, in addition to all four Kansas PBS stations. So that's the totality of who's all involved in this project. The purpose initially was to promote the work of the Continuous Learning Task Force, and that has now shifted over to providing, through our PBS stations all across Kansas, providing supplemental educational content to students and families throughout the state. It's been a wonderful project. The first project underway is called Learning Across Kansas, where each week, a group of grade-banded teachers, we have early childhood elementary, we have middle school, and we have high school, and our illustrious hosts record many lessons each week. Those many lessons are recorded in their homes or in an area that they can get to safely. And it's based on themes that are consistent across all grade bands. So, and then they send them to the PBS stations, these home recordings. The PBS stations work their magic, and this is all in-kind work, folks, right? And voila, you have a 30-minute show for high school, for middle school, and for early childhood elementary that run each week. So with that, it's my privilege to have with us this morning, Mr. Eugene Williams. He's the Executive Director at KTW here in Topeka, and he's representing our PBS stations, and also our trio of continuous learning experts and ultimate hosts for their shows, who are going to talk a little bit about their experience in this Learning Across Kansas project. So Eugene, take us away.
See if I can get myself unmuted here. Can you guys hear me okay? Great, great, great. Well, just want to let you guys know that this all started with a teacher. You know, once the governor made the decision, well, first off, thank you all for inviting me, but once the decision was made by the governor to kind of, you know, kind of close schools towards the end of the year and stuff, I got a call from a friend of the station here at KTW here in Topeka, who is a former principal. And we started talking, and she said, hey, you know, this is how I learned years ago. And she said, you know, would you guys be interested in doing something like this? And so the next thing I knew, I found myself in a meeting with my senior management team here at KTW, talking with them, and they were asking a whole bunch of questions about, you know, how could this be done, and so forth and so on. And then I called Dave Heineman and talked with him a little bit, and I said, hey, Dave, let's pull the rest of the managers together and see if we can have a discussion with them and see how we might be able to assist, you know, the department there, along with the governor and some of the students and teachers here in the state of Kansas. And so then we had that meeting, and lo and behold, about three meetings after that, I met Jay, and we had a couple of Zoom meetings and things like this. And before you knew it, we were doing a show every day of the week on public television that hopefully is helping and assisting parents, students, teachers out there as we kind of go through what we're dealing with here with COVID and trying to finish out the school year. It's been a lot of fun for us. We've learned a lot of things on the education side. I think the educators hopefully have learned a few things from us, some scary things from us, because of the way that we have to deal with certain types of issues and things on the broadcast side of things. But we've had an opportunity to work with three phenomenal folks in education, and that is, of course, Cindy and Diane and Tabitha. They've been just wonderful to work with. They've done some great work for us, and then they have pulled together a team of folks that work closely with them. And so every Monday, we get a slew of videos and content and stuff from them. We work on it on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and then we put it all in this huge file on Friday, and then it starts being broadcast on that next Monday morning. So it's been interesting for us, and we really enjoyed the opportunity. So I'll stop there.
Thanks, Eugene. Yeah, interesting is a great way to put it, and it's, but it's been so fun on both sides. So thanks for sharing that, and thanks for being with us today. Okay, Tabitha?
Okay, good morning, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay, good. So I just, again, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you to PBS for this opportunity also. One thing I really wanted to mention was that this feels like a true partnership. So when I say those words every week when I'm hosting between KSDE and PBS, I mean that, because I have spoken to people who are doing partnerships with PBS in other states, and the teachers are doing all of the producing on their own, or, you know, having to come up with all of the ins and outs. And so this has felt like really open communication, and both of us working towards the same goal together. So Kansas has got it going on in more ways than one, and this is one of the really special ways that they do. So thank you, PBS, for that. I also want to say that it's just been wonderful to work with some elementary superstars. I would not be surprised if some of these teachers that you're seeing on the show have been past Teachers of the Year, or you will see them on Teacher of the Year teams coming up here in the future. Because they're incredible. They love kids, they love learning, they're creative, they are flexible, and they are so encouraging. You know, we have a group text going on where every time somebody watches someone else's clips, there's very specific compliments about it and why it worked. So definitely, teachers infiltrating TV has been just like teachers infiltrating anywhere else in the encouraging department. But I also want to say that I've had families from all over the state messaging me, my friends, my coworkers, my family, saying, my sister-in-law and her kids watched you on PBS this morning, or so-and-so liked this project that you did. And so I think that we're reaching people, and we're reaching people of all demographics in their homes, and I'm just so excited that we've been able to do that. And again, just thank you for getting to be a part of this, and I can't wait to see how it grows in the future.
Thanks, Tabitha, I appreciate that. It's been so fun to work with teachers, I know that, and you leading them has been wonderful, so thank you. All right, Diane?
Hello, everyone. And I, again, am very honored that I get to be a part of sharing this story with all of you. My favorite aspect of the entire experience is how it has helped teachers grow to be better teachers through this process. We have, teachers are discovering how to use video production. They're learning how to craft a really good story in a concise amount of time. It's really kind of interesting, the week, next week's show is going to be all on Kansas and agriculture. And Christopher Bericmo, who's from Shawnee Mission, he actually did a road trip out to Nicodemus and is telling the story of the Exodusers. And he's been just really incredible about being kind of a road tripper. Cindy has gone to many spots across Kansas, and she does live feed them, calling to you from Mushroom Rock. It's just really, really exciting that we're discovering more about each other, about our craft of teaching, as well as some tech skills along the way, which kind of makes my heart super happy as well, the tech instruction person. But the really interesting thing is, is how we have connected teachers from all over the state. There are teachers from Waukegan, from Dodge, from Frontenac, from Topeka, from Johnson County, from Wichita, I mean, we're just from all over, and we created this one virtual kind of partnership with PBS as well as each other to create an experience that we will never forget. And we couldn't do it without the friends at PBS. So I want to thank all of them for helping us be better teachers through this process.
Awesome.
Wow, yeah.
Go ahead, Cindy.
So I'm just sitting here thinking, I have, I just want to yell ditto to everything that they're sharing. Yes, yes, yes. So excited that we get to work with the partnership, and the emphasis on that partnership, and a special shout out to Jay Scott for really, I would say, spearheading this whole thing. And he's the one who sends out the meeting invites, and he's the one who keeps us going and encouraging us. And no matter what the situation, you can tell he's been trained well by saying, I'm so glad you brought that up. And so he's really great at that and negotiating so many voices to be heard with our teachers and PBS and everyone else involved in that partnership, and he's done such a great job. Diane and I had the privilege of sharing across the United States, it was just, I think it was statewide, it might even have some people from across the globe, on our partnership with PBS in the State Department of Education, and how that's worked and how others could maybe facilitate it. And we got to hear from other states that are doing it. And I think Tabitha referred to how we appreciate, what makes us unique is that partnership, and we learned that, and Diane and I got to share our message with other states, and they were very curious in saying, so this is all pro bono? And that made us really unique compared to how other states are doing it, both on the PBS side and on the teacher's side, that really we're doing it for the common good and what's right, and that whole mission of PBS and education coming together in that common really vision for doing what's right and forwarding education is really special. So been appreciative of that. And I think Diane said it well about the growth that we've seen in our teachers, and it's really enlightened me in thinking about our PD for our own staff moving forward across the state to be even better prepared if we go back into some sort of continuous learning plan about what's needed, because we're learning from PBS on how to do better videos, and all things along with copyrights. We learn more about copyright from PBS than we've probably ever thought we ever took in classes in college, that's for sure. So we all know about now copyrighted pictures and music and videos, and having a, you know, having a can of Diet Coke sitting out is a no-no. So we've learned a lot of those things. It's been appreciative that we can really transfer our skills forward. So very appreciative, it's been a really great experience, and I would say the number one takeaway I've had is the relationships that we've built with the teachers that we're working with, with each other and with PBS, and it always comes back to relationships for me. It sure does make life valuable.
Yeah, thank you for that, Cindy, and for the kind words. It's always hard for me to hear those things, you know, and be able to respond to them. So thank you for the kind words. But it's been so much fun. And as Eugene said, the timeline was so steep, we just got things up so quickly. But I do want to remind the board, that Episode 4 is running this week. It's on a very small topic, How to Change the World. And it's, again, supplemental education to what the education that schools are already providing. There'll be two more weeks of episodes, ending in late May with Episode 6, and some of our PBS stations are planning on running those shows this summer. You can all access the episodes at our KSDE YouTube channel. Denise has been wonderful to make sure everything is aligned and out there, so thanks to her on that. And we have started discussions with this group on future projects, on what a future partnership would look like. It's been wonderful to have this. I keep pushing Cindy and Diane and Tabitha to keep track of the outtakes, because I think that could be some high comedy in the future. And we're really excited about that, and excited about this project and able to provide some education, supplemental education to our kids and families across Kansas. So with that, that's all we have. I want to thank Eugene and Diane and Cindy and Tabitha for taking the time to join us today.
Well, first of all, Eugene, thank you very much on behalf of the board and PBS, the PBS stations. This is a wonderful partnership that the PBS across the state has agreed to participate in and to help our students and our teachers. And of course, to Tabitha and Diane and Cindy for spearheading the efforts of, you know, all the work that goes on, just amazing, I mean, just so much fun to watch. And actually, Cindy, I was at Mushroom Rock just a couple weeks ago. I took a little road trip up there, interesting place, I've never been. Lifelong Kansan, everybody needs to go see Mushroom Rock. So, but thanks to all of you guys for everything that you do. I know we may have a few board questions. So if we do, board members, I'm kind of on two screens, but I think I've got everybody there. Yep, so raise your hand if you have any questions that you'd like to ask. And again, we're talking about Parent Camp, our PBS Alliance, or the Senior Leader Project, the seniors are off, but Jay can certainly respond if you've got any questions on any of those. So any questions on any of those three just phenomenal projects that are going on? I'm looking at all my board members, I don't see any hands raised. Okay, well, I guess we have no hands raised. Oh, Michelle, Michelle Drabrowski has a question or a comment.
Just a comment, thank you, Madam Chair, just a comment on the Parent Camp. I was able to sit in for an hour on that, and that was, that was great. I thought that was, I thought it was going to turn, you know, it was going to be everybody complaining and be negative, and once we broke out into those small chat rooms and heard from, I think I focused on the fourth or fifth graders, because there were different rooms based on ages, and it wasn't negative at all. It was, they were, I mean, they were frustrated about some things and told us why, but they focused on the positive. So I just want to make that comment that I was able to sit in on that, and I thought that was, and that was something else. Thank you.
Yeah, I thought that Parent Camp was great, too, and I hope when we get back to, next year, we can continue to do Parent Camp and even expand that. I think Janet Wall had a question. Janet, let's get you unmuted. You're good, whoop, now you're good.
Okay, good. I was just amazed, I just want to thank everyone. I haven't seen the Parent Camp or the seniors, but I've heard what they've done, I'm just so impressed, but I haven't watched these PBS shows. They are amazing. I was so thrilled whenever I watched them, I thought they were fascinating. I tend to record them so that I can watch them later, in case I have to get stopped in the middle of something. But anyway, thank you all. It's just, I'm so proud right now, I'm so very proud of all our educators who have done such an amazing job to get every bit of this done. Thank you to the department, thank you to all the educators, thank you to everyone. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Okay, if not, I believe we will recess for lunch. Again, thanks to everybody who participated in these partnership groups that we've got going on. I mean, what a fabulous group of people that are working with us, helping Kansas kids and Kansas teachers and our families across the state. So again, thank you, thank you very much. We will be in lunch break, we will be back at 1:15, and we will start on information about the Kansas Early Childhood Strategic Plan from Amanda Peterson. So, board members, if you want to stop your video, we'll be back in about, in an hour.